The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this is a school board study session, that's why we're not going to have our public comments and other things, this is an evening where we're going to spend some time talking about our new boundary adjustments in order to get our population and our elementary schools right-sized, I guess would be the proper term. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Pierce and Mr. Phillips, would you like to lead us down the path?
Excellent, okay, thank you. So I'll turn it right over to Rob, we're going to spend a little bit of time just reviewing where we left things and then get you up to date on the feedback that we've received so far, and so with that, we'll hand that out when we get through the feedback part, and I'll just hand it right over to you, Rob.
Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, like Dr. Pierce said, a lot of this is going to be kind of reviewed, but this first slide just shows that one of our strategic goals is that the Kibb School District is innovative, proactive, and accountable. And then one of our objectives there is that we'll, we'll conduct a review of the elementary boundaries to see if we need to, to move them, to change them, to tweak them in order to, as you said, Mr. Colas, to like to right-size some school enrollments. This has been the timeline that we've been following, we actually had quite a few conversations before December 14th, and on December 14th we came to the Board and talked about a plan moving forward to take a look at, at our boundaries, to see if we needed to, to move and change some of those boundaries. And then the real work started in December, then January, February, where there were a lot of meetings, there was a lot of computer work on our software, talking to people, meeting with principals and so forth. We came to the Board on February 22nd just to share, okay, here's where we, here's where we are in the process, and we at the time had three different scenarios that we, that we showed the Board. And then during the month of March, the plan was to do all the parent meetings in the month do, to do all the parent meetings in the month of March, but it just really wasn't possible. So we held one meeting, a community input meeting in March, March 30th, a couple days before spring break. And then we held two more of those meetings on April 10th, and people, got a lot of really good feedback, which you'll, you'll see later. And then here we are tonight on April 26th, where we're again updating you on where we are, take a look at those three scenarios again, plus a fourth scenario, which came out of the February meeting. And then after, after receiving input and direction from the board tonight, then we'll go back to work and, and create an initial recommendation, which we'll bring to you on May 10th. And then on May 24th, we would give a final recommendation and look for the board to take action on that recommendation. Just a reminder of our goals for boundary adjustment. One is to, and this next slide will really, will, will show what this, what this first one is, distributed enrollment more equitably among schools. It'll, it'll give a rundown of where schools are, elementary schools are, from smallest to largest. We want to accommodate future growth in the west end of our district. We want to increase enrollment at Ridgeview. First of all, Ridgeview is just one of our smaller schools anyway, but when they are rebuilt and then they open for the 2024, 2025 school year, they'll have additional classrooms, so we want to make sure that we increase enrollment there. And then we, we need to decrease the enrollment of a couple of our schools at Aiman Creek and St. Joseph's. So this table here shows all of our elementary schools from smallest to largest. And this is based upon the October enrollment count. So you can see that Edison, on that day in October, Edison was at 326 students. And then at the other end of that, Aiman Creek was at 739. So Aiman Creek is more than twice the size of three or four of our elementary schools. So we really felt like we needed to do some adjusting to, to narrow that gap between our large and small schools. These are the schools that, these with our scenarios, these are the schools that will be affected either, affected either through losing students to another school's boundary, or gaining students from another school's boundary. So it looks like there are 10 of them. In the process, we, we have a new software to help us map neighborhoods, so that we can draw, we can draw a boundary around a neighborhood, and the software will tell us, you know, exactly how many elementary students live in that, in that boundary. And it'll also tell us, so like if I were to draw like a, like a polygon or a circle at a neighborhood in Aiman Creek, it would not only show me how many Aiman Creek students are in that boundary, but also students who may attend another school, but happen to live in the Aiman Creek boundary. Like they have, they did a transfer, or they have childcare in that boundary. We've talked to transportation. We want to make sure that on any of the scenarios that we have created, that transportation can handle those moves. We wouldn't want to create a scenario where our, our transportation director gets up saying, well, we, we can't make that happen. Talked about walk zones. We, I've talked with special education administrators to make sure that any scenario that, that we come up with, I try to make sure that the placement of those programs aren't affected. And then we've talked about grandfathering the students. There's a slide later on the presentation, talking about grandfathering students. We've had a lot of committee work. We've talked with the community, received input from the community. We've come to you a couple times, getting your feedback and direction on the whole process. And then at the end of the boundary process, we'd be completing the board approval on, on a scenario. So before we look at the scenarios, are there any, if you have any questions?
Sorry, I have this request. Then you go back to the slide that had the largest to smallest schools?
Yeah, I'll press it. That's one where I keep up for movement.
Yeah.
And I have a, you want hard copies of this one?
That would be great.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Just take a picture with it, you can make it your phone. So Rob, can I ask a question while you're doing that?
Yes.
So regarding those, at that meeting, when we talked about that, I asked you about the Ely and 12th-ish, whatever that, those apartments there by KID and that.
Oh, yes, in the South Gate move.
Yeah. And there, there are more.
It looks like it is.
And so that's, it's going to be a lot of kids living there. So have we factored that into their?
Not, it doesn't show up on this slide, but there, on, on scenario four, it, it'll help address that when we get to scenario four. There's a sliver of South Gate that we're looking to move, like to Lincoln, which then can help absorb those students who potentially would end up living in that apartment.
Okay. And then the other one that I wanted to ask about is CCB and Hanson Park there, where the, the overflow apartments are coming in right down next to the park. There's, there's ground on Tempe there, you know, there's the ones behind, but now there's the new ones that are coming down, all the way down to the park.
Okay.
And those are all apartments also?
Yes.
And that's a, a big number. I don't know how many apartments are there.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I don't know how many apartments, and I don't know, like how many children would live in those apartments. I just don't know anything about it.
Because that would be subject, I don't know exactly, or would, that's to be the rid, in Ridgeview's now.
So, right now, right now they'd be Aiman Creek, because.
Just to the east of CCB?
So, I thought you were saying CCB.
Columbia Center Boulevard, sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, just to the.
Or west, sorry.
It'd be to the west. So, yeah, so like if you.
My kid.
If my kid's right. Let me, let me get to, let me get to a map that I can, the laser pointer. So, so I think what you're talking about is, it's in, it's in this area here.
Right.
This is Cleve Center Boulevard, and they sit on this side of Cleve Center Boulevard.
Correct.
Yeah. So right now, today, they belong to Aiman Creek.
Okay.
It would, in, in all the scenarios, now probably just in scenario one and three, I'm not sure how, no, actually, probably in all the scenarios, they would be going to Ridgeview.
Yeah, because they're walking distance, actually.
And I made a note that we can try to find out some more information about the apartments by the, by the PUD there on Ely. Well, I don't, we don't, we don't know if they're 55 and all. We just don't know anything about them.
It's not 55 and older. It's, the majority are going to be 55.
Okay.
Can I ask you two clarifying questions, Rob? Walk zones, is that a mile?
A mile.
One mile, okay. And then when we talk about the capacity at the schools, is that counting currently with, like with portables, or is that in-building capacity?
Yeah, good question. I was going to address that later, but.
Thank you.
Oh.
No, which is totally fine, because it's a really good question. We might as well do it now, because it talks, on this slide, it, it mentions the capacity at the school. So like Edison has a capacity of 406 students, given the classrooms that they're using today, classrooms that they're using today. But Edison, as well as Vista and Sunset View, Canyon View, and so they have empty classrooms. So the capacity, that number does not include the potential of filling up those empty classrooms.
Okay.
It's just, what we just, we, we took a look at like, say, a kindergarten classroom. We would take, you know, we'd probably take kindergarten, that'd be 20 students. So if there were only 16 students in, in a classroom, we would think, well, they have capacity for four more. And all the other kindergarten classrooms, they have capacity for three or four more. So we added up all of that, those numbers to get to what says capacity.
Okay.
But it does not include empty classrooms, which will be important as we get to.
Right.
Okay. Okay?
Rob, I know you did a great job of just explaining that, but did I hear you say the capacity of the add-ons are included in here, wouldn't the?
The, so like empty classrooms or empty portables are not.
Okay.
Figured in the capacity.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that is because?
It was, it was a decision that we made at the very beginning, knowing that they had empty classrooms, and if we had to, if we had to go beyond like the classrooms that they're using today, we knew that we had those empty classrooms in our classrooms.
They might get buildings using, they're not necessarily empty, they're using them, but do they absolutely need them? Maybe not, but it would be hard to find them away.
Okay.
But they are.
For a couple of schools, they're, I'd like, they are literally empty, or like storage. Other schools, the principals are really creative, they're trying to, hey, we need a space for this to occur, and so they find that space. And while it's, it's viable for them to use it right now, really, if we were looking for space, it'd be an easy.
Although they're going to include those.
Right.
Try to kind of not disrupt too much, you know?
Okay? Okay, so scenario one, this is, this is the, the current map as it is, as it is right now. It, that map does not show all of our schools, it only shows the ones that are going to be affected. Plus Cottonwood, Cottonwood's going to be affected eventually, but the move we're going to make for the Cottonwood, there are no homes there, but eventually there will be, so we're going to play with their boundary a little bit. But I, I did mark Westgate and Avistad, Eastgate, Cascade and Washington, because they're not affected. So scenario one, I have a laser pointer, but no matter which map I use, it's going to be tough to, so. You want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start up here, this area right here, there are about 20 students in here that presently, they, they belong to Aiman Creek, which sits right here. They used to belong to Sunset View. We're proposing that we move them back to Sunset View. This is, this is Steptoe, Cleve Center Boulevard here, and then this is Center Parkway. About 20 students, we'd move them to Sunset View. Also, there's about 46 students in this area right here, that presently belongs to Ridgeview. We are proposing that we'd also move them to Sunset View, again, Sunset View is one of our smallest schools. The big move would be all of Hanson Park moving into Ridgeview. So, so it'd be Clearwater, Cleve Center Boulevard, the backside of the Ridge and Hanson Park, I think it's called, and then Steptoe. We'd move them all into Ridgeview.
How many?
That's, ooh, 100 and 180.
Next slide.
It's 184, as of when I first did that boundary, that area.
And so that's without those apartments that I was asking about?
Yes. I think, my guess is they're probably sitting.
They're right there, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you can see the park right here. Let's go up to, to, you know, Vista is one of our smaller schools, so we want to increase their enrollment. And so this area here presently belongs to Hawthorne. Voland is a street that's right over here, and off of Voland, there are a couple of streets that come off of there. Those families would stay at Hawthorne, but on their, over their back fence, all the way over into what is now this is boundary, would end up at Vista. That's, I think that's 70, that's 76 students. Edison is our smallest school, and so these two neighborhoods here, these two neighborhood, neighborhoods here would go into Edison together. Those are, there are 83 students who, who live in those two neighborhoods. This neighborhood here belongs to Sagecrest, so like Creekstone Boulevard, Canal, Southridge Boulevard here, Hildebrandt here. This line here really is, there's not a street there, at least on our software. Eventually, it's going to be McKinley, because they're building a whole bunch of houses, of course, up in here. This is McKinley. So we're proposing that this area here, which is, so that, that's, that's 65 students, we'd be moving them into the Lincoln boundary. I know in the comments, there were a comment or two about those students, you know, they, they live closer to Sagecrest than they do Lincoln. And actually, last weekend, I jumped into my car and set it, there's, there's like a little roundabout, a little traffic circle right up in here. I set the traffic circle, and then I started my iPhone timer, and I just checked, you know, the mileage, put the mileage to zero, and drove to Sagecrest. And it's like within a tenth of a mile, and just like 30 seconds different than from that, that traffic circle up into, to where Lincoln is. It's, it's pretty close. And the one thing that makes it difficult, and I get it, is some of these folks here, I mean, they, they could see Sagecrest from their home.
Well, it's all, and technically, that's the same neighborhood, but that's off, that's off South Ridge Estates. Actually, some of that, I guess, is not, it's, but I guess the, the ones on most, on this south side of it, yeah, that's also, that's all the same neighborhood.
And, and actually, the, the conversation about, you know, I could see that, I could see the school from my home. There are, I think there's like three homes that sit right, right here on Steptoe. One of them commented, or a couple of them commented, I could see Aiman Creek from my backyard. But, but to walk from these homes here, they could walk and not be bused to, to Sunset View.
So the polygon there, the students that would go from Sagecrest to Lincoln, yeah. That's, are there more homes going in on the left of that, right before you get to?
Like over here?
No, down in the Sagecrest-Lincoln.
Polygon and Sagecrest Lincoln.
Keep going down to the right.
Oh, here, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Are there houses going in right there?
In here?
Because I, I drove up there the other day, and it looks like they're grading.
I think they can, yeah. But if, if they were to go to Lincoln, Lincoln, I can.
Yes, I was looking at that, because you got.
Yeah, they're well, their capacity. Then the last part is this area in here. Right now, these are Sagecrest, Sagecrest boundary. We'd be looking to, and right now, there's just not that many homes with elementary students in them, but we, we'd be moving them, I think my laser pointer's getting weak. We'd be moving them into Ridgeview. I, I think I said at the board meeting before, that we hope that there would be a road going over Thompson Hill down here on the, on the west side, to make that, make that drive easier. But they would be bused down to the Bob Olsen Parkway and up through here, and then up to Ridgeview.
And how, how many are there right now?
Right now, there's like, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's four homes, three of them have elementary students at Sagecrest. I think there's another home where they have choice transferred somewhere else on this campus.
Because there, I went to that whole thing last weekend, and they're cutting like lots, 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 and you can see all the, the little stakes are in there.
And, and, and one of the reasons we're moving them to Ridgeview is because we want to increase Ridgeview when they get into the. Another line we want to change, and it's, it doesn't really affect, I don't think it affects us now, but this line right here was drawn as a boundary line well before the south of Thompson Hill was, you know, when they're moving dirt up there. And, and so it was just, it was just a line drawn to separate Sagecrest and Cottonwood. Well, from, this is the Bob Olsen Parkway here. This, from here to here, that, the line actually goes right through a neighborhood. And actually, it could even go right through somebody's home. It, it, it was just an arbitrary line drawn there. So we don't, we can't have that line stay there. So we're proposing moving that to the west. There's a ravine right here that we think would be a good, you know, natural boundary. There's a ravine right here that we think would be a good, you know, natural boundary between Cottonwood.
And would it come down right by the 82 there?
So we would, so this, we'd be moving this here, this would be Ridge View here. And then the south part of this old line, we want to move to the east to kind of put a cap on the, a closer cap to Sagecrest, to kind of help protect Sagecrest. So this area here would end up being Cottonwood. So that's scenario one.
What did you say in the student count, Amen Creek to Ridge Ridge View?
Moving from Amen Creek to Ridge View, 184 students. That's going to be give, give or take, because this was done, you know, months ago, but it'll be close.
Thank you.
Okay, that's scenario one. And then this next one is, is if we were to go with scenario one, with all of those numbers, this table shows what that projected enrollment would be with all those changes. So you can see those 184 students taking them out of, out of Amen Creek and moving them up into Ridge View. Then you can see like Ridge View would then go from 334 to 472. Sagecrest, although they're losing that 20 student area, so they would go from 739 down to 535. So like, if you take a look at, so Vista, Vista has a capacity of 402, not counting the portables. But their projected enrollment, moving those 70, I think it's 76 students from Hawthorne to Vista, it would put them at 434, which is above that capacity. Again, the capacity does include at least two empty classrooms that they presently have.
So why, you know, because Hawthorne's got numbers to give, right? In this scenario?
They do.
And now pushing Vista over the limit. They're right next to each other, I don't know, why can't we just?
So I tried to find like a natural, at least I think this is what you're asking, tried to find. So I tried to find a, like, I thought, okay, so what if it's not that line? What if we were to like find a line here? I just couldn't find a line, like a, like a. This line works because there are these homes right here, and the line is behind them, it's it's behind their their back fence. I just couldn't find a line a little bit closer to make it fewer.
Or should we have a people back to the last one?
Like, are you asking why, why even move any?
Yeah. Why would you do that?
Because Vista has 350 students, they're just so.
So one of the things.
They have so little rooms, that they they.
One of the things to kind of remember is that when we've got small schools and bigger schools, it creates issues with staffing, and, you know, we've been talking about the specials and all those sorts of things. So when a school gets too small compared to their neighboring schools, it creates other issues for us with staffing and things, so it's beneficial to have the schools more even, in size.
Sure, but just go back to the, the aftermath, okay? So you look at Hawthorne and Vista here, right? So you're.
So they they would only be 30 students-ish apart instead of like over 70 students.
And I think what you're saying too is that projected scenario for, say, Vista, 434, they have the capacity to house those students. It just looks different on the screen, because we don't have, we're not saying you have two rooms or four or whatever. So 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 they do have the capacity to take on.
Why would we have those capacities? I mean, that's not actually a capacity.
And that's what Rob was sort of explaining about the classroom use.
We we debated, we debated, do we make the capacity the way it is? Which is, given the classrooms that they're in right now, how much more would they have? Do we do that, or do we do it including the, we gift you rooms that could be repurposed to a K5? And we we chose to do it that way, but then we we would just know that if we ended up going over, we knew we had those two.
Can I ask about Lincoln? So they actually. Well, I don't mean change them, but. So on Lincoln, Lincoln ends up taking a bunch of kids, but still ending up with 18 kids less than they had to begin with?
They'll have a few less.
And they have a capacity of 100 more than what we're giving them? So that just seems odd, that they have a bigger capacity, but they end up with less than they had to start with? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
So somehow that just, and I know what you're talking about, trying to move things equitably, you know, within those neighborhoods, but not just of all of them, that sort of strikes me as.
So a couple of things, Lincoln's in between, Lincoln is in between a school that is our smallest school at 326. We're in between the smallest and almost our largest. And so to help Sagecrest, to to reduce their enrollment and to help Edison by increasing their enrollment, we we had to, we felt like we had to do, you know, move these students into Lincoln to help Sagecrest. I mean, this this move here into Lincoln, it really isn't about Lincoln, it's about helping Sagecrest. And these moves from Lincoln into Edison is more about helping Edison, giving them more students, rather than there, there's a reason why we have to, you know, there's a, there's a, some, some issue with Lincoln that we need to fix by the move of them out. They're just caught between those those two scenarios.
So can you go back to the number one again? So I guess my only concern is if you've got, like Katie Porter with her whiteboard or something. So if you've got now Lincoln with 100 and some less students than they have capacity for, are we going to be doing this two years or so down the line where we're having to move things around? I'm just, and I understand exactly what you're saying and why, but it just seems a little contra indicated to take away and add and be less than. I mean, because it, part of it is the numbers, and I get all that, but part of it also is for families. So are we going to move them one way, and then a couple of years later, move them the other way? Because that has happened in the past.
That has happened in the past, and there's one neighborhood in the comments, which you'll see later. There was a comment by Eric, I think it's scenario four, the the east side of Sagecrest, where they talked about that. There's a neighborhood, Creekstone is a neighborhood, that's about. I I mean, I would, I would hope that we would not go back and do that in a couple of years, or that's, that's not really.
I think it helped me understand like what the end goal is here. So my my mind, the end goal is to make sure that every building has the appropriate amount of kids that are, but it seems like that's not the goal. The goal is that actually the the schools are more similar to to each other in size.
Meets a capacity.
Three of those, yeah, three of those different things. One is, one is about capacity, and one is about equal size to the to the neighborhood.
Yeah, and it's, just because we are, we're trying to keep neighborhoods together, that, I think, although I don't know that this board has weighed in on that, but boards in the past have always felt that we need to keep neighborhoods together.
We did talk about.
So by, in trying to make it more equitable across schools, it it's really difficult when you have to take chunks at a time. Now, maybe equitable is not the right word, but to make it so.
More similar, right?
Yeah, so they're more similar in a manner.
Similar student enrollment.
Compared to the, to the, to the.
Each other.
Schools, so that's okay, so that's really the goal. The goal is that the schools are similar in size to each other, that's number one.
We want to avoid having really small schools and really large schools. We want to have more similar lease size schools, so that's what we mean by distributing the enrollment more equitably amongst the schools.
So evenly might be a better word.
Might be the word. And then we want to ensure that we're accounting for future growth at the west end of the district. Is there's new neighborhoods coming in with their space at the schools that are, you know, in that neighborhood? And then I'm just kind of going back to that goal slide, increasing enrollment, because we're big, building Ridge View larger, so it has the ability to be, and then it, the decreasing enrollment at Amen Creek and Sagecrest is, because like we've got space at Edison, it's really small, those are really big. We want to evenly distribute enrollment better across the schools. Helps with staffing, helps with lots of things.
So maybe, maybe we work through the next couple of scenarios? Because I think in the Lincoln's case, I think in all four scenarios, it leaves 100 student gap. So we're definitely going to have, I think, discuss that, but it might help if we get through the other couple of scenarios, and then we we kind of know which one maybe to work off of a little bit easier. Might help us.
Can I, I want to ask one question not related to that. So I know that you can, your system can tell you how many kids we have in, does it, tell us by grade level? Or does it just, I can't remember, I asked you that before.
If it does, I don't.
It just says it's a KST kid. Because I think I asked you that before, because in my neighborhood, off of Kellogg and Abe, that's a, we don't have as many kids as we used to, and it's becoming older, us, parents with no kids there anymore. Some younger people are moving in, but that's not going to happen for a while. So if we, is there a way to look at elderly neighborhoods, I guess I'd call it, as opposed to Hanson Park, that area, young neighborhoods, where young families go? Is there a way to look at that and kind of drive around and see? I I mean, I don't know, but some of this is based on not knowing, right? We don't know, it's hard to know. But like in my neighborhood, there will be normal houses still, but I don't know if there will families be moving in, but there are three quarter year lots, and I don't think a lot of families, right? So I wonder, I wonder if there's another way for us to understand it a little bit. Prognosticate is the best word I can think of.
You know, I think one, one reality is that you're pointing out is neighborhoods do have cycles, right? They sort of tend to have cycles.
Yeah.
And and it is difficult to always project too far into the future what's going to happen. And I think one thing that, you know, we might just need to come to understanding with with our community is that the reality is boundary changes are part of the regular cycle of things we need to do, unless we're going to add a bunch of portables or have, you know, really disparate numbers across schools. And probably the reality is we should get more used to, I know it's hard, I really do know it's hard, but, you know, every few years, potentially doing boundary adjustments. Because that's the, that's really, you have to be responsive to the changing cycles that happen in neighborhoods and enrollment.
Regular, just verification of boundaries kind of thing, rather than waiting till school. Then it, then it'll keep us out of.
I think typically, boundary changes are made when you kind of have to. We're kind of at a place where I feel like we kind of have to, you know, or you build a brand new, you know, a brand new school like we built Sagecrest, like we built. Typically, it's going to be two of boundary changes.
And the hard part about that is, is that when realtors sell homes, it says this is in the Ridge View, Desert Hills, Kamaiakon or something, whatever it is. And so family says, oh, I want to live there. And like in our case, for a while, after my kids were done with elementary, they would have gone from Ridge View to Edison. So if you thought you were buying a house for whatever reason in a particular area, and then it changes, I'm not sure that that makes people very pleased. I mean, some things have to be done, but I just think to the very least possible movement is, would be helpful.
I don't think anyone's moving people just for the sake of moving.
No, but when, when you look at that one, you know, the the Lincoln one, if I'm one of those parents that's, my kids are moving out, but I say, well, why? Because now we've got 100 less kids, or however many less it was. That doesn't make common sense to to people. And that creates a lot of discontent, I think. Like, why should I have to have my kids move if we're not, if we don't need to?
Let's pass to.
Okay, scenario two, again, this is the current map. Scenario two is very much like scenario one, it's just different in a couple of spots. Scenario two splits up Hanson Park. So this northern part, Cleve Center Boulevard, Fourth Avenue, a little bit here, Stepto and the Cleve Center Boulevard, we'd be moving that area of Hanson Park up into Sunset View. And because we would be doing that in scenario two, we would keep this area of Ridge View, we'd keep that down. In 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 scenario one, this area was, was up into Sunset. So that's the difference between one and two. The rest of this stays the same.
So you move in approximately 20 students in that.
There's, I think there's like 70 in this area here, that northern part. Yeah, 70 from from Amen Creek in that northern part here. But then we would leave these, I think it's 26 students, we'd leave them at. Everything else is the same.
Do you, off the top of your head, and maybe not, but that little spot above Ridge View there that goes into Sunset View, to the left of where you're, yeah, that, like the left from there? How many students are, is that group there?
In this area?
Yeah, just that whole group there that's going to Sunset View roughly, do we have any idea?
I, I, yeah, I, I, this area here?
Yes, the one that's, yeah.
I'm not sure, I haven't, I haven't plotted that to see.
Just as curious.
All right.
Thinking that's a natural line.
Yeah, because that's probably got to be what, Clearwater there, the the line that's.
Yeah, this, this is Clearwater.
Yeah, so that Clearwater there and that group potentially sticking with Ridge View is a natural break, but just.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure how many students are.
Because I, again, I know we're going to talk about it, but keeping though, like from Sunset View, keeping that natural break with Ridge View, and maybe moving that Lincoln line in Creekstone to the west, some would fill up Lincoln. And it would, it would, I mean, it might start Ridge View a little bit lower, but if we know Ridge View, Amen Creek, Sagecrest, those are the schools that are probably going to pick up students.
Yep, they will.
So.
I think, if I understand correctly, you're talking about moving this line further.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And that area, that area's been, had gone back and forth a couple of times between Ridge View and Lincoln.
Yeah, it's, it's on, yeah.
Okay, so that's scenario two. And here's the table that shows the projected enrollment, given those those different moves. Any questions on scenario two?
Can you hold that just for a second? That's good, thanks.
Ready, Mr. Mayberry?
Ready.
Okay, scenario three. Scenario three is very similar to scenario one. And and really, scenario two, they're kind of all similar, one way or another. So scenario three, we go, we go back to the idea of moving Hanson Park altogether, moving them into Ridge View. them into Ridgeview. The difference, the difference between this one and scenario one is, this scenario one, all of Hanson Park, and this went to Sunset View. So in this scenario, we're leaving all of Hanson Park together and we're leaving this area, they'll stay at Lincoln. That's the main difference between one and three. And scenario two, remember this top part of Hanson Park goes over to Ridgeview. And so the table, the big, the big change on the table here is that Ridgeview, they gave, they, again, they have all of Hanson Park from Amen Creek, but what's missing from there that was in scenario one is they, we subtracted those 46 students that went to Sunset View, they're now gonna stay in Ridgeview. So you can see that their projected enrollment is 518, their capacity is at 520. I mean, so, I mean, if that were to happen today, they could handle that, they could handle that. The problem is by doing that is they don't, they don't have room for these people.
They'd be, they'd be putting a portable out there first year, yeah.
It's like the west, it's like the west side of scenario one is the best. It's like, I mean, but like the west, the west side of it, the map is good in scenario one, but then scenario four is the best, but it's the east side.
So that's scenario three.
And before you get to scenario four, just to remind everybody, scenario one, two, and three, you saw at the study session in February, and then based on board feedback at that, or excuse me, at the board meeting, based on board feedback, scenario four was created after. So, yeah, so I just wanted to remind you of that before we get into scenario four.
So scenario four.
Quick question. Was scenario four discussed at the community meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, scenario four is very similar to scenario two. We split up Hanson Park. The big difference is, is we'll start here with this area here, which today belongs to Sagecrest. In one through, in scenarios one through three, we were moving them up into Lincoln. In this scenario, we're gonna leave them at Sagecrest. But in order to help Sagecrest, we're, in this scenario, we're gonna move this area here, this area here, up into Canyon View. And in that, in that area, there are 92 students up here. We'd be moving them up into Canyon View. And then because we're not moving these students up into Lincoln, we would be moving this top portion here of Southgate, we'd be moving them to Lincoln.
So to me, that makes the most sense on the east side, but less sense on the west side. Like the west side, you know, like keeping Hanson Park, that would together, that's like more sense considering that huge area is gonna grow, that's, you know, that polygon that's, yep, that's gonna grow. So you, so you know that's not gonna happen. And matter of fact, there's 40 houses in there right now that are people moving into today. So here, I don't know. Okay, so, so you know that's happening, so why not plan for that by, like, so the west side likes scenario one and three, that, that, that plans for that better. And then this side, this much better, can they keep the neighborhoods together? Cause the southeast corner over here, like really all those are, that's, that's a long haul to Sagecrest.
It is.
It is a long haul where, you know, Canyon View and what's, and is that east, what is this, what is this, Pinkberry Bottom?
Southgate.
Karen? Cascade is.
This right here?
Yes.
That is Cascade.
Okay.
And we thought about playing with this area, either, either this area here, or maybe this up in here of Cascade, doing something with them. And, and we just couldn't make it work using those two, those two whole areas.
Yeah.
How, how does this impact the, the numbers? Do you, you have those probably, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, the, the table?
Yeah, the table, how are we?
Yes. So like Lincoln, they would still be losing those 83 students or so to Edison, but they'd be getting 41 students of Southgate, so. They'd, they'd be running around 400 students. Sagecrest would lose those 92 students to Canyon View, I put them at 532. Canyon View, and, and when I presented this fourth scenario in, to the, to the community groups, there were a couple people who, you know, pretty quickly caught that, wow, okay, so Canyon View, they're saying their capacity is 444, they, they, they didn't see that or talk about that, but like, so Canyon View, given those 92 students from Sagecrest, I'd put them at 496, which is a pretty big number and it's well over their 444. With those two additional classrooms, you figure if you were to put 20, you know, theoretically, you know, the, the 25 each, that, that would put them, you know, they, they couldn't possibly handle that. That'd be, it'd be tight.
Southgate's also losing kids, right? To Lincoln?
Yes, 41, that's top.
So. So you could actually why not push them into Southgate? Half and half or something?
Um, let me go back. So this.
The Southgate's, Southgate's losing and then you push them to Southgate.
You're talking about this, kind of this and half?
Or, yeah, or at least push that into Southgate, seems like that's about the same number you're losing, you're losing.
Oh, instead of Canyon View, pushing them up into Southgate.
Yeah.
So Southgate. So adding, it'd be adding 90, 92 students to the, to the 439. They don't have any, they don't have any class space if that were dying.
But if you, if that Canyon View number was cut down to 50 or 52, that would drop them down closer to their capacity and then Sagecrest would keep another 40. So they would still be, you know, 60 kids-ish away from capacity.
So we have to, and I, I honestly did have that done this, we would have to look at this area here close up, and, and it's not on the slide, I have it on my software, but it's not on the slide. We'd have to look at this area to see if there is some kind of a natural boundary.
Where's the, what road is that? Right there on the O, between the O and the N on the polygon?
The O and the N?
Uh huh.
That, that's a north-south road?
Yep.
I, I don't know.
I'm sure.
Like I said, to, to get this whole thing in there, you, you lose all the street names. You zero win.
Olympia, maybe? It's gonna be Olympia.
Yes.
Cause that's Ely on the blue, so that's only in the roundabout.
Yes, you could almost.
You can see where the roundabout is.
Yeah, so you could almost cut like Olympia, Canyon View, west of Olympia, Southgate.
Southgate.
And then, I, I would als- additionally, I would also ask, maybe we look at moving that Lincoln boundary in Creekstone?
Over, yep.
Uh, was that west? Pulling that over and, and max, not, I don't wanna say maxing Lincoln out, but get them a lot closer to capacity and then keeping that right up under Clearwater there for Ridgeview, that's right in Sunset View right now, uh, right there, that group. Maybe look at bringing that into Ridgeview and see how that shakes the numbers out.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna come back after and make sure we got all of the notes, to make sure we have clarity on all of that.
Yeah, that Lincoln part is, to me, the most out there, you know, that they end up with the less students, and I realize, you know, why we're doing that. But, you know, when we rebuilt schools and we built them to put more students and then, and then we're not, you know, that's not always the best use of that extra space either.
Yeah, and if that, if that number above Ridgeview that's in Sunset View right now, if that takes Sunset View way too low, I, I mean, you could still keep it there, I just don't know how it would impact Sunset View, Ridgeview, Lincoln, like how that would create. But I, I agree with Diane, that Lincoln needs to, I think, needs to be a lot closer to capacity, cause they're not gonna build in that area.
So, yeah, I mean, we could look at, we could look at Creekstone, we, we just didn't mess with Creekstone this time, we, we talked about it, but we could do that. Creekstone will be, and, and I don't live there, but Creekstone could be that neighborhood that is like the Hanson Park, as you'll see when we get to the comments, it was loud and clear that they want to keep all of Hanson Park together.
Sure.
I would think it's Creekstone. You understand it?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think it would have to be all or nothing with Creekstone, if we, we'd have to just drop this line down here and take all of that Creekstone.
So if you did that.
That makes sense to me.
Because that's Kellogg that runs right through here, okay? I just drew a line there, so that's Kellogg. So if you went, if you moved Lincoln and just took the whole thing and slid it over and just took this, there's, I think there's a street right in here, I'm not sure what that is. Can we do that? Or you don't wanna go across the highway, is that?
No, I just don't think you need to.
Well, we used to take kids from Southgate across 395 and then they moved them, cause we didn't wanna do that.
Yeah, we, over the years that I've been in elementarys and kind of, yeah, that's kind of gone back and forth where we don't want to have a boundary straddling 395, but then there were times where it's like, well, we're gonna have to, so.
Yeah, cause if, we used to take this part in here for Southgate.
So I actually agree with, with this, that keeping, you keep Ridge, Ridge, uh, Creekstone together and Ridgeview together. I think that, that you can do that.
All through the Creekstone.
Excuse me, Creekstone.
Hanson Park. I didn't watch you there.
Yeah, whatever, right, but yeah.
I didn't watch you.
You knew what I meant, okay. I think, and I think you can do that with that scenario that kind of, so you, you keep, yeah, yeah, pretty easy, yeah.
I, I met, there are some kids in that Creekstone that are going to.
There are like.
Yes, cause they're up on the top.
Yeah, I was kind of reading their, their goal, it's hard to tell in there, but, and maybe they're doing that because they do want to look possibly.
Yeah, I have, and I'm, I'm of the mindset of, I mean, we're, we're really looking at maximizing what we can in all of our schools with the exception of probably Sagecrest, Ridgeview and Amen Creek, cause that's where the growth's gonna be coming to. So if we can push everybody into the schools we, we can and get them closer, obviously give them a little room to play with some numbers, but, you know, Sagecrest, Amen Creek and Ri- Amen Creek and Ridgeview, those are the ones we're gonna probably need significant, significant room in, you know, 50, 60 students. Amen Creek might even be a hundred and some students, cause the growth's coming out that way. And then hopefully by doing that, if we have to do boundaries again, it may just be those three plus cottonwood, cause that growth out there kind of dictate that, but they're gonna grow, that's.
This, uh, in this, in the Creekstone area here, there are 65 Ridgeview students and 20, 29 Lincoln students. So there are 29 students who already go to Lincoln. Like Vic said, some of those students may be, they may be a Lincoln, cause they didn't wanna.
Go to Brooklyn.
Go to Brooklyn. But right now, they're, they're at Lincoln.
Cause that's gotta be Kellogg, that's gotta be Kellogg right there, right? Where the C is on Creekstone?
Right there.
This is Kellogg.
So that's a, a perfect break. So if we were to see how many kids were there, I, I think that might fill us up in Lincoln and then.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Cause where that polygon is with pointing to Ridgeview, where they're, I mean, that's gonna, that's gonna fill up quickly.
In here.
That one, yeah, that one's gonna fill up quickly, cause to your point Diane, that I mean.
They're built, it's there.
I drive that Bob Wilson all the time, they're already, it's pushing down pretty good.
Pretty well there, yeah.
So I think what we want to do next is share with you the feedback from the community that we've received to date, and then we'll come back at the end and get direction from you about, based on your discussion, based on community feedback, what, what do you want us to do next prior to bringing the next iteration of something back to the next board meeting? So we, we've got a hard copy of all of the feedback and then we're gonna run through the highlights with you.
So before we do that, can I do this slide here? So earlier I talked about grandfathering students, so what we'd be looking at, what we're recommending is that for the 24, 25 school year, which is when this boundary change takes effect, it doesn't take effect next year, it's the following year. We're thinking that we would grandfather those fifth grade students and their siblings so that they could stay at the school where they are now. Families though would need to provide transportation. I talked to, with April Heiser and Transportation about, you know, could you, could you, could Transportation handle it, you know, having those grandfathered students, the fifth grade students and siblings, like transport them so that they could stay at that school? She said that would be funny to her.
Yeah.
She said she didn't think she could make that work.
Well, and in the past, that's been the policy, is that parents transported them, so.
Okay. Okay, so we, like I said earlier, we held three community events, Amen Creek, what was it, Amen Creek, what was it, Southgate, one was at Sagecrest. And here are those.
You see them there?
Here are those right there. At the end of those three presentations was this slide here. I just expressed to them that your, your input is, is very valuable. We really want your input and they were, especially at the meeting at Sagecrest, they were very interested in making sure that the five of you received their input. And so at the meeting day, I had, I had hard copies of the survey. I, the, there's a QR code that they could access by using the camera on their phone and then there was also a link there, so there was ample opportunity to give it. So there were, there were 18 community members in those three meetings. Full of, of 18.
In all the combined.
In the first one, there were six, the second one, there was one, and the third one at Sagecrest, there were 11. I did a, an online presentation that was, it's on YouTube. And so people could go and we advertised that on our website, they could go, they could view the presentation, which is exactly the, except for one slide, because they, they couldn't do the hard copy of the survey, so I had to change that slide, but other than that, it was exactly like what I showed in person. 334 people as of this morning, early, 334 people had viewed that presentation, which I think is a pretty good number. And then 103 community members completed the online survey. And so that graph right there shows that, so, so 62% of those 103 surveys were completed by Amen Creek families. 27 of, or 26% were done by Sagecrest families and then there's a smattering of, of a few other schools represented there.
Was it in Spanish also?
It was not. And not on purpose.
I know it's not on purpose, but you know my thoughts on that.
I totally do, and it was.
Cause it doesn't make it available to those families.
So, so the questions on the survey were, which, which school do your children, does your, do your children attend? And it was which scenario do you like best? Why do you like that scenario best? Which one do you like the least and why is? And why is, why do you like that one the least? And then it just asked, do you have any other, any other type of? So, um, so the scenario that, uh, that you like best, by far, scenario one was the favorite amongst those that filled out that survey. It was at sixty-nine.
Especially all that, like all these Hanson Park people. They don't like scenario one. They're like, because they keep Hanson Park together. Makes sense.
And, and actually, um, so, so why do you like that scenario best? So first of all, there, there are a lot of comments, just about, I, I want my child to stay where they are. There were just a lot of those comments, which is totally natural. I understand. There were twenty-six total comments. It said they liked one and three because it keeps Hanson Park together. There were some other, and, and there were, there were some other comments that I think they bet Hanson Park, uh, but they didn't mention Hanson Park directly. So I didn't know if it was Hanson Park or if it was that area at the top of Lincoln because they're kind of close together. I just didn't know. So my guess is it would be more than twenty-six. There are a lot of comments about making sure that Hanson Park stayed together. Couple of comments. One of, number, the first scenario affects the least number of schools. And actually, one, two, and three are, they're all equal in how the schools are affected. Somebody said number one evens out the numbers the best. Multiple comments about one and four keeping their children at Sagecrest. And it, 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 it's, it's an interesting comment only because, uh, if, if those people said they like number one because it keeps their children at Sagecrest, that's because they, I'm going to guess, it's only a guess, uh, is that that area.
Not all there.
That area, in the South Ridge area, it's probably those folks. And the four, um, they like, you know, they're probably ones who are on the east side of Sagecrest boundary.
Yeah.
And then someone made a comment that number four is the most equitably, equitable for balancing SESMS schools or social, uh, not social motion.
So, so.
Uh, yes, thank you. I really love social motion. So, so that's, those are the comments, you know, which one did you like the best? And there are, of course, a hundred and three total comments. And so to see all the comments, you have them, you have those in front of you. So which scenario do you like the least? Um, it's a little more closely grouped together on the one you, uh, the one that they like the least. Scenario four was the one that, out of all those comments, that people felt like, yeah, I like that one the least. And all of my scenario two.
Scenario four, like, if all the Sagecrest people, all the Sagecrest people liked it.
Yeah, so, right. And, and, and part of that also, the two and four, why they like it the least, is, is again connected to Hanson Park. Because, uh, so when you look at, first of all, at the top, I put many comments about not wanting to change schools. But underneath that, one of the reasons it's, it's least liked is because there were, there were at least twenty-one comments that they identified it. Two and four is what Hanson Park is.
Yeah, the, uh, the, what I said at the beginning, I think it's, from what I'm looking at these surveys, it's like the west side of one is the best and the east side of four is the best.
Yeah, I, I initially thought, in my mind, four, to me, made, kind of made the most sense. But after, after looking at it, though, it does disrupt more schools than the other ones. And, and if we can avoid disrupting two more schools, potentially, I, I, I kind of am leaning that way personally. I, I think, I mean, I honestly would like to see scenario one with the, the Lincoln move. The moving Lincoln to Kellogg and then, and then catching the top half of Clearwater for Ridgeview to see where that puts the numbers because that might, that might solve Lincoln. It might keep Ridgeview, you know, not at super capacity, but, um, high, high up. And, and if, uh, and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to necessarily do that for Ridgeview if, if it took way too many from Sunset View, you could leave it. But definitely moving Lincoln to Kellogg and pulling Creekstone into Lincoln, I think will help fill Lincoln's building.
So I agree with that. So just now hear this out. Okay, when that happens, then that's, the, the, I don't know what, I wish these polygons had numbers to them. But the polygon at Sagecrest, right there, that's jumping into Lincoln. Now, yep, okay, so now you don't want that polygon to jump in there because you just took, because you just grabbed Creekstone, right?
Well, well, it depends because even with that polygon in there, you, you're a hundred kids short of Lincoln.
Right.
So you're still, you're, now, now if you're just moving the boundary to Creekstone, are you pulling a hundred kids into Lincoln, fifty kids? How many kids is that? Because that's the one you want to try to, that's the one you want to try to fill in versus Sagecrest. And I know whatever scenario we decide to go with is going to be unpopular with a segment of the population. I completely understand that. There's never going to be a right answer to this, but.
One idea is Creekstone is going, is stable, is full. Uh, you look at that polygon above Sagecrest, it still has growth, I do believe. So if, if you're looking for something that's going to sustain and equal out Lincoln in the future, you might want to keep that polygon attached to Lincoln because it, it has room for more.
Uh, which polygon?
So just one down here and then.
This one here.
And then move that to Kellogg. So you're going straight down Kellogg. Well, this is McKinley, but basically.
But keeping that with Lincoln.
Yeah.
Keeping that with Lincoln allows the growth that's going down, downward where you were.
Yeah.
It allows this growth population to go to Lincoln as it grows.
There's going to be a lot of building on, right on that McKinley thing. That's where they're dredging down the hill.
Yeah, they have it, uh, yeah, they have a tiered value for the homes of foundation.
And, you know, you can see the plots at City Hall.
Yeah.
And we can, you can know exactly how many homes are going to go in there.
And if you take that, um, if you move that Lincoln over to Kellogg and take those to Lincoln, and you take that top section up by Clearwater where Ridgeview is at, that's currently Sunset View, if, if that went to Ridgeview, you, you still potentially could do something with that other polygon in Sagecrest right there. Filling in it at the one left, one, go one more polygon over to your left, yeah. That one could potentially stay with Sagecrest if they're not going to build a road over the hill.
Well, they are.
We know for sure they're going to build a road over Thompson Hill that drops right down into Ridgeview. I, I, I don't know what that plan is. But, but you could keep, that would keep the kids on this side of the hill.
It would.
And fill in all that, that whole Bobleson. Because right now with that polygon, you're going to have, most likely on one side of Bobleson is going to be Sagecrest, and on the other side of Bobleson is going to be Ridgeview. So, so just a thought. It just all depend on how those numbers shook out with movement in Creekstone.
I mean, I know that on a map it makes, but the geography of it, like, like Thompson Hill is a, is a big hill that you've got to go around, right? It just seems like everything on this side should go this way. If, you know, on the south side, you go south.
Except for that's not where the neighborhoods are now.
Yeah.
But by, but by doing that, we're going to have to figure out another way to move some Sagecrest boundary. Because if we leave this here as Sagecrest is going to.
Well, that's my whole point is that east side is not, is like, it's, it's not close to Sagecrest.
True. So the question would be on the west, on the east side, then where would we push that?
The whole, the whole little east pink section on the bottom, the southeast section is not, that's not even close to Sagecrest. So you push that into Sagecrest.
And where do they go?
That's what I'm saying.
You're pushing them out of Sagecrest, what?
What about in Olympia? And then you kind of.
Well, yeah, for that one, for that one area, and this isn't the same map as what's on scenario four.
Right.
You can, on the, on the PowerPoint, you can see more of this section that's going to go up into Canyon View, but we'd have to take more than just these people. There's another section a little bit lower down, uh, which probably.
You can see on, you can see on the, on map four over here.
Yeah, there's a little bit, but right here, I mean, we'd have to take them. I, 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 the question would be, and we couldn't know this answer, is if we were to do that, versus that, how many, how many students are going to be in here that now are going to stay at Sagecrest?
I, I think, I think what you're talking about right now is not necessarily for today, but I think that is maybe the next step. When, when it starts building out and we do need, if we do need to make an adjustment, that might be that area where we could adjust and kind of shrink down Sagecrest.
Yeah, maybe that's the next one.
That, that might be an answer to the next one. If Sagecrest starts filling up, move those, move those into.
Well, the comments, Gabe, I think you made this just about, um, in scenario four, there, there are just more schools that are affected. That, that comment, uh, that's what this comment here, scenario four causes unnecessary. And there, this is, this is their, these are their, unnecessary instructions to.
I agree with, I agree with that on, because of the west side. You, you take that, if you add scenario, the, the west side of scenario one to scenario four, I don't think the comment exists anymore. Because I'm looking at this thing, like, everybody in Amen Creek wants scenario one, and everybody on Sagecrest wants scenario four. I'm like, that those, I guess, mesh those.
Again, we're not going to, I mean, we won't have a perfect scenario, but I think if we do our best to keep the neighborhoods together, that would be the, the big piece, but.
And I think that's where the comments come from.
I don't know. If you look at the comments, page one, Sagecrest, Sagecrest and Amen Creek.
Look at the very end, though.
I know, but you, you're skipping over, you're saying all of the people. But no, not really, because if, right on page one, it shows scenario one, favorite dot Amen Creek and Sagecrest goals. Run on through page three.
So I think at this point, we need to think about what, what direction would we like to give staff in order to, to move forward with this. So I think.
So I'd like to.
We talked about moving, uh, Creekstone into Lincoln. Looking at trying to keep some of the east side kids that are from Canyon Lake, those other areas, seeing, can we move them somewhere else or out of Sagecrest? Is that correct, Micah?
Sorry. I was.
Moving, you were talking about trying to move some of these other kids from these other areas, from Creekstone, those other, not Creekstone, Canyon Lakes in the south.
Yeah.
Moving them into other areas to, to move them out of Sagecrest.
Well, I, I thought it was really Canyon Lakes, like.
Well, but, but, well, east of Canyon Lakes, but off of, you know, off of Ely and the forty-fifth.
I would say, yeah, east of, east of Ely.
Okay, so we can look at some of that. I think that's for starters. And again, I think one of the, the piece we're, we're missing here that's, I've been thinking about since I'm married to a real estate agent, looking at, you know, what do we, you know, what's the Tri-City Association of Realtors, or someone's going to have an idea of how many homes you're going to start taking down in those areas? And that might give us an idea of what the next twenty-four to thirty-six months will be looking like for potential builds in that area. And that might be a piece of information we can look at, say, hey, look, we know they're going to take down two hundred homes in the next twenty-four months. And, and they're going to have a pretty good idea of the, the, if you're getting more starter homes or, you know, less expensive homes, the chance of that having to be a home with young children going to, going to, uh, elementary schools, that might be a good piece of information. Again, I'm trying, certainly not trying to pile on more work, but I think if, if, if we're looking at this, what do we see coming and what type of homes we see coming in that area? Because that's, because we're really looking at, as we talked about doing it, adjusting this every twenty-four months, if we get a rough idea of what those takedown schedule is, that'll give us an idea of what we're looking at. Take that into account into our stuff. Because right now, we're, we're throwing darts in those areas.
And we're talking about, not this year, but next year.
Correct. Yeah, that's why I say twenty-four to thirty-six months. I mean, that's, you know, we're, we're out, you know, two to three years of, of the people that this is going to really start affecting.
So I don't know exactly how you would want to do this, but it appears that, at least to me, that the Lincoln thing is kind of the crux. So if we can figure out how to do that, does it build out then to the other ones? If we can figure out how to kind of even that out a little bit? Because we talked about, you know, moving that over down here onto Kellogg. So.
That makes sense.
If we did that, make that your epicenter, and then, then could we build it out around, you know, end up the other numbers?
I think that's exactly what we're talking, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, Gabe, Diane, I, I have also.
Because that's just, to me, that's where the, and that's the epicenter really of all of the buildings that we're looking at. And then this stuff here, and we all know this will build out here and here.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I was just going to say, or propose this. So working off, so this is, I'm throwing this out to everyone. So working off scenario one, moving the, the, the border of Lincoln to Kellogg, that's, that's, would be move one.
Yep.
Addressing potentially what Mike is talking about down there in E, Ely. Uh, east, east, that section there, looking at that and addressing that with, with those two schools that, uh, there, uh, South Gate and Canyon View. And then, and then.
Instead of everybody going up into Canyon View.
Yeah, just seeing how, seeing how those numbers play out, because that'll affect Sagecrest's overall numbers. And then just that little section above Ri- Ridgeview, that's, that's currently Sunset View. Yep. So if that, would that work to come into Ridgeview or should it stay in Sunset View, like that section? But to me, those are the three. Yeah, because that's, that's Clearwater. That's, so that's a natural break. So, uh, again, once, once you, once you make the first move with Lincoln to Kellogg, that's going to tell you how much room you have at, at Ridgeview ultimately. So do you, do you absorb those kids from, from that section? I, I, might, might be the section. So ultimately, it's three, three moves, in my opinion, that, that I would like to see, but that's.
Keep Hanson Park together and keep Creekstone together.
Yes.
I think that's pretty well. And then looking, what you can do in east of Ely, I think those three things, and then, yeah, then fill in Lincoln. Those are the four things you want to do, right? Keep Hanson Park together, keep Creekstone together, fill in Lincoln, and get east of Ely and for Sagecrest.
If you, we could be keeping Creekstone together if you move that, that Lincoln battery over.
Yeah, pretty much.
Take Kellogg. I think Kellogg, Kellogg.
Kellogg is the boundary.
Keeps Creekstone, and then it's the whole, like, older part of, prior to Creekstone.
How that works there.
Keep Creekstone together, keep Hanson Park together, um, fill in Lincoln.
Fill in.
And then east of Ely.
East of Ely is where those apartments are going up there.
So I think that's one of the four, the four things, the four takeaways.
I, I would definitely say I, I would strike three for sure, just because I don't, I don't, I don't believe filling Ridgeview to capacity right away is even a, a starter. So I would, I would strike three. So, so that, that's my proposal, to work off scenario one with those four things.
Strike two also.
But Ron, Mike, I, do you have some other thoughts on it, or?
No, but.
No, again, we're, we're.
I'm not talking.
We're not trying to chop up neighborhoods and try to make.
Yeah.
But, but again, everyone around this table has to understand, none of these are going to be super palatable.
Well, none of them are perfect.
Well, and, well, I, I got that, but it's, we just, we just need to all be okay with that, that we're going to make some people mad. And we have to do this in the best, the least harmful way possible, because this is going to be uncomfortable for everybody.
The, the other.
Sorry. Yeah, anyways, we just need to, just need to keep them on, you know, that's, you know, do, do the least harm here.
So, so number one, obviously, the students and the, and how that's going to affect them. But I don't think we've even mentioned the teachers and how this would affect them potentially, right? With moving schools, if, you know, you're moving a hundred and eighty kids from Amen Creek, they can't keep the same staff. They're going to have to move. So we are affecting a chunk of teachers as well. So, again, keeping that in mind and ensuring that the right moves for ultimately students, but teachers is, as well, and as we do this, because it's going to impact them.
And I know this is in consideration, but history has been classroom size also. People are very concerned about classroom size. Sometimes these moves overload some classrooms and underload others. But I know you're doing your job, and I just throw that out.
Yeah.
You did it, bro. We're sitting here and whining, and you figured it out.
Every year, Vic and I look at classroom sizes.
Well, yeah, I think too, specifically with, with Lincoln, Lincoln's still got three portals. You know, and so again, anytime, you know, getting away from portals as much as possible is high on my list.
Yeah. Yeah.
I agree. I, I agree.
But I have to say this, Mike, because some of those portals are not at darn nice.
The web portals are very nice.
Yeah, the web portals, I know, I know that everyone likes those.
Teachers actually buy to get the web portals.
Have, have we, I know we got feedback from the community, have, is there, have we got?
Have, have we, I know we got feedback from the community, have, is there, have we got feedback from teachers at all? On, on these scenarios to say, hey, like?
Teachers could take this, the same, you know, the same survey. I mean, yeah, we, we didn't have it done like a separate process.
Is, is there a way, is there a way we can get that survey to them and, and just potentially see what they, what they, scenarios they dislike and like? And see if that aligns with kind of where we're heading as well, and, and maybe where the community tied to it? I mean.
You know, I, I would just say, yes, teachers are, you know, affected, but really it's the families who are most affected. I, I, I don't know, I mean, I think historically, and people who've been here longer than I have could speak to it, but it's really been a community and family focused process, because those are the people who are truly affected. I mean, we do have teachers who move, you know, between different schools and things every year. And enrollment within a school ebbs and flows and even without boundaries, right? And that's just kind of our, part of our normal, normal process every year.
I'm, I'm just looking holistically from every.
Teacher could take that survey, just like.
Every, every piece, so.
Family, yeah.
So then I, I would encourage teachers, if you're watching, to look and provide your feedback then.
So I have a principal waiting tomorrow, I could ask principals to offer that to their senior undergraduates. We just need to do it quickly.
Yeah, well, but my only question about that would be, so I don't know that, um, like, I wonder if we're going to create a new scenario, which it sounds like we're going to do, right? We've got board feedback and direction on what to do. It, it, it seems to me like, do we want to, I don't know that we would want to, you've already said strike three, strike two is kind of what I heard. So we don't necessarily want people to comment on those and then feel like, well, wait a minute, you already said we're not doing those, so why are you asking for our feedback? I mean, so would, would maybe the next possible step for us to take the direction that you've given tonight, develop that scenario to see if, you know, the feasibility of it, and then, and then get feedback on that scenario from families and offer that out to teachers too, and then bring that all back as part of the initial recommendation on May 10th. So we basically have, here's a, here's kind of the tweaked scenario, morphed scenario that the board's seriously considering, tell us your feedback.
Yeah, works for me.
1.5, yeah.
Yeah.
I also just, I kind of, I kind of feel the same way about the neighborhood, about Hanson Park and Creekstone. I kind of feel like South Ridge Estates and Panoramic Heights, kind of like to keep them together with Sagecrest, because I feel like that's the neighborhood.
Spread's a, Panoramic Heights spreads a long way across there, and so does.
The South Ridge Estates, like.
South Ridge Estates.
Yeah.
Goes way down.
But that is, that is South Ridge Estates, like, where Mike's, above Mike's finger.
Right, it goes all the way.
That's Panoramic Heights, and then just south of that, Mike, in that same polygon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about a break. So all that's South Ridge Estates, and so is across Babelson, that's all. So when you're, when you're on Babelson and you're kind of in that B, right, you have both sides of Thompson Hill, all that's South Ridge Estates, and so all those kids play together.
But unless, yeah, unless you're, I mean, that's 60-some kids, so unless that chunk of Creekstone is 160, you're going to be still way short, so. But I think we need those numbers to see, and then more discussion to follow.
In the Creekstone area.
Creekstone and.
Yeah, I agree.
Lincoln into.
Yeah, I have to Creekstone.
You, you know how many that would be if we moved that Lincoln border over now? We have that in a, okay.
Yeah, we, we have the, the other one too, the Sunset View, you, you, a lot of the more kids than you think, so that may not.
That's a crazy area.
Yeah, that, that would be.
So in Creekstone, there are 94 students. The 20, the 29 of them already go to Lincoln. So we would be moving approximately 65 families in Creekstone from Ridgeview into Lincoln.
And so that would put them in, that would put them about 30 under their capacity then, which.
About the same in that other area, so probably just a lot, probably keep them in Sunset.
So you would just take that Creekstone to Lincoln, that adds 60 kids to it, that fills a big gap in there. We just don't know what that number for Ridgeview would be at that, this time total. Or would it be 60 kids?
60 less.
60 less kids from what nu, from what numbers?
From all Hanson Park.
Oh, so 60 from that 184, so it'd be 1, 120 going in there.
Something, yeah.
If that keeps Ridgeview in the 450 range.
That's room to grow.
With room to grow, that's. And all the, and all this takes care of the whole, the specialist stuff, we, that's all, that's the whole.
Helps.
Cool. Rob, awesome, yeah, I mean, it's.
How much hair did you lose over this?
A little. Maybe more gray than losing.
Thanks, Rob, it's hard.
Okay, so just to summarize it, we've got good direction on what to do. Our next step is to take that direction, create sort of a scenario one A. I don't know, we'll call it that or something, because we're working from one and doing the, the changes. We can get that information back to the board, and then we'll get it out to another round of community feedback online. It seems like most people were, you know, we got the most response from the online versus the impersonating. Staff can take that same survey feedback process, and then we would bring, we'll bring that to you at 10.
So as a, as a byproduct, as, as a byproduct, product of what we've done tonight, and we agreed to eliminate two, three, enforce, here's why I say that. Our next meeting, I don't want someone to come back and say, can you put four back up there or two back up there?
I think that's a good.
I, I like to narrow this process down to a conclusion.
Yeah.
So we eliminate some.
Two and three for sure.
And four.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did four.
Because we've already kind of taken care of the four issues in one.
Yeah, but here's, here's why I want to be careful with four. It was popular with the community, so I don't want to eliminate completely the, the choice of the, uh, community yet. This is just me talking, but one and four was popular. We can keep those on the table, but eliminate the ones that we absolutely know, two and three. I think we have done a good job of narrowing it down with our efforts tonight. That's just my thought. If you want to get rid of four, we can. I, I won't be against that either.
Two and three for sure.
I think you've taken care of a lot of the four, what people like with one, but you might look through and make sure that there's not a few things that are still there.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure.
In a sense, I think it's accurate to say we're.
Not raising any of them.
Well, we're, I'm good with that idea of eliminating two and three, and then building off of one with aspects of four, like you discussed. And so it's kind of a tweener of the two or a melding of the two with some tweaks.
Yeah.
And then having the opportunity for people to comment on that before, because at the next meeting, we're bringing the initial recommendation, which will be the, what we've just talked about tonight, but you won't be voting on anything until the following meeting, so there's still time for additional comment and, yeah.
And one person said about four, and this was the, something that I brought up. If they said, um, this was a person from Sagecrest, it said, scenario four is a mandate fix that will fester and have to be adjusted sooner than later, which is true, because we've got all those other people that are going to grow. So I, I think if we take the good parts of four, add it into one, which you've already written down, we've got.
So we'll have, so next meeting, we'll have the map scenario plus the table with.
Plus the feedback.
Plus the feedback, okay.
Give out rewards.
And we're doing this.
Well, I, well, I mean, the survey's going to be out there, it just depends on people doing it.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a big boundary move and 100 people have done the survey, so we want people to be engaged, but they have to go out and do it too.
Any questions, thoughts, comments?
I think the other question we asked about, excuse me, was those vacant, quote unquote, vacant rooms, and we're going to be able to see that.
Find out how many classrooms are available.
Available, yes, that would be helpful.
Regardless of what we do, how many are available.
Correct.
Thank you.
Perfect, all right, well, our next meeting is in two weeks. We're going to be discussing the preliminary budget for 2324, dual language adoption recommendations, K through 12 student goal report, and again, our favorite topic, the initial boundary recommendation. You guys, yes, sir?
When are we going to talk about the renaming of the gym?
Yeah, I was.
Well, we have, we have that, we're still waiting for the.
That is on the agenda for the, the committee work is be, is beginning, and that's on the agenda for the next meeting in May.
23rd in May, okay.
And then also, um, for the next meeting, um, everything from the legislature should have come through. I mean, I, we have most of it, but I think we'll have all of it by, in two weeks.
Yeah, they're still signing laws.
Right.
So you've got a chance to speak to that during your.
I, yeah, and Dr. Pierce was good about giving stuff from, um, also.
And a lot of that'll also be reflected in the, in the budget.
The, yeah, the, there.
In, in the preliminary budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's our.
Perfect.
So turn to next page.
Next page?
Oh, you don't have the next page?
I don't have the next page. What do I have?
We have executive.
So, yes, we have.
Yeah, oh, yeah, executive session, yeah.
Sorry, maybe it's on that page.
It's just on the.
Oh, gotcha, it's on the bottom.
So we're going to recess into executive session for how long?
I'd say approximately 30 minutes.
Approximately 30 minutes, okay. That's all, we will adjourn our study session.
Do we have to vote to adjourn?
No, we do not, we know that.
Don't ask Bronson.